Regular meeting Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us and for all the blessings you have bestowed on our community. Lord, we thank you for the successful vaccines and for the progress being made against the coronavirus, Lord. Lord, we pray for all those who have lost loved ones, who have experienced illness or been hurt financially. We pray for solutions to their issues, Lord. Lord, we pray for peace across our country and for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Need a motion to approve minutes, April 6th, 2021. Meeting in dispense with the reading. So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion. We approve today's agenda.
Second.
Questions from the audience? There it is. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Bids, witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-06 Clifford Almond restroom project.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $415,326. There's one addendum which provided the list of attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting and answered questions. The first bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $489,400. Four eight nine four zero zero. The next bid is from E.L.A. Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $546,500. Five four six five zero zero. The next bid is from McKinnis Brothers Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $464,000 even. Four six four zero zero zero. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-05, the W.O.B.C. Utility Relocations at Green Acres Office Park and Benton Road.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $600,000. There's one addendum. It listed the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, included geotech report, changed the bid form, and contract documents, and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from A.S.B. Utility Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $470,055. Four seven zero zero five five. The next bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $568,675. Five six eight six seven five. The next bid is from Dawn M. Brande Contractor, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $467,088. Four six seven zero eight eight. And the last bid is from Pulli Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $542,000. Five four two zero zero zero. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Unfinished business, adopted ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Bardot Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Rehabilitation Project Phases One and Two for a total of $550,000 to come from Fund 400 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to fund the stormwater pump station for the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Phase Two at a cost of $3,900,000 to come from Fund 415 Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Fund. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to reappropriate $20,000 from Fund 497, the 2017 sales tax bond innovation drive for the preparation of a traffic study at Louisiana 3105 Airline Drive at Green Acres Boulevard. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance levy and ad valorem taxes on all taxable property within the limits of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana for the year 2021, and providing the manner and assessment of, and manner of assessment and collection thereof. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance appropriating an additional $1 million to add to the 2.1 million appropriated for a fire station in the East Bank District by ordinance number 40 of 2020. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Motion carries. New business, adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair a drainage pipe located on Village Lane at a cost of $62,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pulli Construction, Inc. for completion of the work. That should be a first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance restricting nomination of excessive sound or noise from motorcycles and vehicles. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriate $150,000 from the Ripperboat Capital Projects Fund to lighting for the Shed Road and Interstate 220 interchange. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the attached amendments with Man Shack Consulting Group, Inc. and Attacka Paul Services, LLC modifying and extending their services to the city of Bossier City. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Counsel, I have a, Mr. President, I have a couple of things.
Mr. Darby.
Okay, he can come after me.
Okay. I was just letting you know he's.
Thank you, okay. I wanted to just get some clarification on this, this amendment, these amendments. The original 3P was in 2016 or 2018? Which, which was it? 16, okay. And to date, the taxpayers of the city of Bossier has paid Man Shack approximate $6 million to date on, on the contracts. In the current 3P contract as far as on the 31st of May this year, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. So the extension.
Hold on just a second.
Okay.
Mr. Haydell, if you're going to speak, if you could come to the mic, please. State your name and address.
Justin Haydell, Man Shack Consulting Group, office at 700 Ogilvy, Bossier City.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haydell. So the, the extension contract will cost the taxpayers of Bossier approximately another $6 million if we, if we vote for this extension.
Well, it will also save the taxpayers over $10 million or more compared to the way things were prior to 2016.
Okay, all right. Why, why was it recommended three years versus one year?
I think the original contract was for three years.
Okay. Mr. Walker, you recommend this contract to be extended for three years?
Yes.
It's your recommendation? When, when you look at that $6 million, it includes four new engineers in that. And those engineers will work for your company, right, Mr. Haydell?
Correct.
Okay. And the city will have access to those engineers. Are they restricted to working just for the city, or can they work privately in your company other than just for the city projects?
They'll be working just for the city.
Okay.
Primarily.
So primarily, so, so they can.
Pardon me. Pardon me. We will not have that in this city council chambers. If you wish to speak, you can come to the mic and state your name and address for the record. If you choose to have discussion outside of the two people that are involved in this discussion, I would ask that you remove yourself outside of these doors. Thank you.
Let me rephrase that. You're not going to get billed for hours an employee doesn't work for the city. They will be spending over 95% or over 100% of their time in any given week working on the city projects.
Well, you, you could consider the city supplementing your employees because they may not work strictly on the projects of the city of Bossier.
No, that's not, that's not the way it is. They're going to be, their primary obligation is to serve the city in the role that they're assigned to work in.
All four?
Yes, sir. All of them. Not all four of them. The entire number of people that we have working under the triple P.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's one other thing I wanted to ask. In the extended or the revised contract, it's, it's stated under 605 Controlling Law and that 606, successors, assigns, and beneficiaries. So that part, I think I need Mr. Hall to interpret if, if he would be so kind to do so. The owner and engineer are hereby bound and the successor, executors, administrators, and legal representative of owner and engineer, and you got parentheses here, are hereby bound to other parties to disagreement and to this, this successor. So just in brief, would you interpret that for me? What, what that really served? What's the purpose of that clause?
The purpose of it is that should there be a disruption in city government and there are new people that are going to succeed the positions that currently are held by council members of the mayor, then, then they would be responsible to those people.
Okay, so would that lock in the, the administration who may take their office in about 70 days? Would that lock them in?
Sure.
To this contract? And Mr. Mayor, with that being the case, you still recommend this extension?
Yes, Mr. Darby.
Okay. Why would that be advantageous to a new administration? To, to be locked into a contract that they are bound to without any input, any, any real, uh, uh, negotiable options?
Because we've hired this firm in a P3 contract, and because of what they've done, they've saved the city money, and I would expect them to continue doing so.
Okay. So, so, so you have no concerns about locking in the new administration?
I'm not locking in the new administration.
Okay. What if they wanted to consider a RFP? Could they do that?
I don't know.
Not if they locked in, they can't.
Well, why don't you ask them?
Yeah, see, that's my concern. Man Shack has served the city well. I, I don't take that away from your company. Don't take it away from what you contribute to the citizen of Bossier, but I'm all, all about saving taxpayers' dollars too. So going forward, if we were to consider other providers versus extending their contract for three years, we might get a better, we might get a better deal. We might, we might save the taxpayers even more money. Even if you think about extending Man Shack's contract for a year. Within that year period, we can do RFP, Man Shack submit their proposal, other companies submit their proposals, Man Shack be the lowest bidder. We may save more money than the $10 million that we've saved over the last four years. So that's my concern. Actually, that's my recommendation. I would, I would much prefer that Man Shack be given a year contract versus a three years. And I would much prefer that there is this time competitive bidding for the 3P. The last time, as you know, there was no competitor. There was no one who competed. So we may have gotten a good deal. They did good work, but maybe there's a better deal out there. Maybe there's a, a way to save the taxpayers even more money than, than, than they have saved us in the last four years. So that's, that's my position, and that's my recommendation, that we consider Man Shack extension for one year versus three years within that 12-month period that we consider RFPs. Then they be the lowest bidder, Man Shack, Bossier City, back in love again. And that's, that's what I would like to see. I'm just one counsel, but I, I would love to see that as an option.
Yes. Mr. Larkin. Mr. Darby, you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Larkin.
The, why, why did you select one year?
Oh, because if you, if you think about it, the administration, the new administration will come into office in about 70 days. It seems equitable and fair for that administration to have options. With this proposal, they have no option. But give it a, a whole year at the same rate that they charge us now, Man Shack, it's, it's all equal. It's, it's, to me, it's fair to everybody concerned.
One other question. You, you made the comment that we may get a better deal. I guess was equally true that we may get a worse deal.
Well, everything is a risk. Man Shack had no experience in 2018. We took a risk. They came in, did a good job. Other providers out there, we, we may get a better, we may get a better deal taking the risk on them.
I don't think that's accurate that we had no experience.
Not, not operating a water plant.
Yes, sir, we did.
No, you did not. No, you did not. I didn't vote for you then because you didn't have the experience, just like you didn't have experience to do WOB. You have no road and highway experience. If you did, you would have shared that with us. You did not share that. I remember that pretty well, that you did not. You were chosen without any competitiveness at all. There was no other, it wasn't put out for bid. Man Shack was selected without considering anyone else, any other provider. And so that's, again, I think competition is good for everybody. I want to save taxpayers' dollars. I want them to have the best that a company has, has to offer. And as I said, I don't take away from you that your, your company has done good work for the city. But I still think the taxpayer deserve to have the option, the administration deserve to have the option to consider a, a provider in the future, not, not be locked into, to this, this one provider.
Earlier than three years.
Well, it, it is probably going to take a while to do RFP, but 12 months, you know, the administration get their feet wet. We have time to put out the RFP. Within that time period, we may, we may be still in, in the business with Man Shack. We may not.
Thank you. I, I'd like to hear from other speakers as well.
Tommy Chandler, 2416 Tillman Circle, Bossier City. I have some concerns. Why are y'all removing all the for convenience termination clauses in the Man Shack contracts? I mean, if these clauses were good enough for all these years, why strip them out now before the new members, the new administration is coming in?
What, what is, what do you?
For convenience. In the contract, y'all pulled out the for, for convenience clauses. Why y'all turn it out now, not, not over the years?
I'll answer that, but Jimmy, would you like to first, or Justin, would you? I mean, I'm just, David, it's up to you.
Go ahead. If you'd like to, or Mr. Hall.
Well, I mean, for convenience, basically provides that either party can, can cancel the contract at any time. So basically now it's, it's being removed so that there, if there's no issue that would cause them to be removed for cause, they can't just be willy-nilly released from the contract.
I mean, if it's good then, I mean, if it's good then, it's going to be good now. So why y'all pull it out, I mean, now on me?
Well, I think also, Tommy, that they've made a big investment here, that, you know, they've, they've, they've got trucks that, that go through and, and can survey our lines and wash out our lines. They got an office down in Bossier. I mean, when they first started, that wasn't there. So convenience is like, I don't like you today, tomorrow you're gone. I mean, so.
That's not good business. I tell you, if they're, if they're doing a good business, I wouldn't do that, would I?
Well.
Why do you want it on there?
I mean, why take it out?
Because they've proven themselves.
Okay.
That's why.
All right.
They've made the investment. They've proven themselves. The numbers speak for themselves.
Okay. And then I don't know if my addition is right, but I catch, I got the $6 million dollar increase on that too, and y'all answered that a while ago. And, uh, and then the amendments are not clear when the current contracts start and when they end on those things either. I was wondering about those. And like two weeks ago, y'all voted to defer a five-year contract extension, but now y'all seem to be voting on a three-year contract extension. You're still obligating the new, new administration and the new council to agreements that go way far into the future. And I was the one that was concerned about that.
You want to answer on that one?
Yes.
The next morning, we started meeting, you know, the very next morning. Uh, Mr. Ben calls me. We met for four hours. Okay, we had another councilman would go down and meet for another four hours. Long meetings that day. We trying to get everybody on board with what we did. Five years were too long. You know what several councilmembers thought? They gave, we came down to three, to, to three years. And, uh, you know, we, we had another item on the agenda that, that they, they okayed if we deleted that item. It's going to be a city employee now. So, you know, there was give and take on both sides. And we've come to a, a resolution. You know, that's what, that's all I wanted. You know, a lot of the media said crap that was never said from, that I never said. So that's why we did it. We deleted to have a, a good negotiation with Ben and Justin. Ben had the authority from Justin, I'm sure, to, to make those changes, and that's what we did.
Well, I'm just saying. Yeah, I mean, I don't see why y'all just don't go all the way to the end of the year, you know, with this contract extension.
Well, we called.
Let me, I mean, then, let me, let, let me and my guys decide, you know, if we want, which way we want to go. I mean, I mean, but Man Shack's done a great job. I mean, and the thing, but let's, let us see what's going on.
Can I, can I just respond to that one?
Sure.
So you want to go to the end of the year, which is, say, six months. So what we're saying now is six months, then they're done. We have nobody then qualified to run our water sewer plants. These guys are certified in the water and sewer plants, okay? So.
You're saying that, you say I'm going to cut them out in six months?
No, I'm saying, but you said six months. So if you say, oh, we're going to try to find somebody else to do it, it's not going to happen. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm just telling you honestly, it's not going to happen.
What about a year?
Well, we're, I'm okay with three years. I really am.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, I'm just asking y'all to, to defer this agenda number four until July 1st, if y'all would. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Can I, can I respond to that one real quick too?
Yeah.
Tommy, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't your contract begin June 30th?
May 31st. The triple P contract.
Okay. So, I mean, you got it. We wouldn't have nobody working in.
Chris Smith, 333 Fletcher Drive, Bossier City. I have some of the same concerns as Mayor-elect Chandler. The, for, the for convenience clause being terminated, I think that, along with the three-year deal, I think that locks the new administration in, gives them no authority to at least look at the contract. Y'all may have had meetings for four hours the day after the last council meeting, but people who weren't involved in that is the new mayor-elect, his team, the new city council members. We're going to be the ones judged by this three-year extension. So we should at least have some say to at least look into it. Y'all get to make the vote, but at least bring us in on it. Of course, the $6 million, which we've already addressed, I won't, I won't go on that. But my biggest concern is it seems to me that this breaks the city charter. The city charter is pretty clear and says that the mayor gets to appoint directors of engineering, directors of public utilities. And by extending these contracts way past the current mayor's term, you are hindering the new mayor from being able to appoint those and follow the city charter. One could argue we already broke the charter with the initial contract, but since it had the endorsement of Mayor Walker, you could consider that a de facto confirmation and nomination process. But Mayor-elect Chandler has not had the opportunity to nominate, to vet companies or individuals that could do this job. And so I would just ask. And so I would just ask that, as Mr. Darby already said, a one-year extension be considered instead of a three.
Mr. Hall, is the mayor Walker still the mayor right now?
Correct.
And can he not enter into contracts?
He can.
All the way through June thirtieth?
Yes, sir.
And does the charter state that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Sean, a, a comment, uh, okay, go ahead.
Shane Cheatham, nineteen twenty-three, two weeks ago, is that it's a power play and, and long-term, is it's what, is it, it's not what is best for the taxpayers of Bossier City. The six million dollar increase is a concern to me. Somebody's telling us it's saving ten million. I know they've done a good job with the water department. As far as the engineering goes, they've probably done a good job there, but we won't have an opportunity to know about that until we get in. Again, it, it's nothing personal, but if you were in the shoes of the new administration and newly elected, and you were in the shoes of the people that voted for these changes to lock in for three years, it's a tough thing for everybody to swallow. A one-year contract, y'all catch us up to speed as the new administration on how well this program is going, then we continue, and we sign a three-year contract. But the new people that were elected by the city to come in aren't going to have any say in this. And I really believe that if we thought about that and what's best for Bossier, maybe not a power play of some sort of, let's, let's rush stuff through. Two weeks ago, we had a third, over thirty million dollar building on there that was said, hey, this is rushed through. I do realize that May thirty-first this contract ends, but if we could do a one-year, I think that'd be beneficial to y'all, to the people of Bossier City, and the new administration. Thank y'all for your time.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to comment that we were elected officials as well by the citizens of, city of Bossier City to make these decisions. Just as the incoming may be, so were we. And they've done an exceptional job, I can remember, pre-Man Shack. And when that water department was ran by the city of Bossier, they've done an exceptional job. And I have no problem with the three-year extension, based on the history that we already have with them, what, four, five-year history.
Thank you, Mr. Free. There's no further discussion?
So, I, I, I'll make a comment, you know, I, just, in, you know, I, I, I do think it's appropriate for Mayor-elect Chandler to, to point out the things that he did. And, uh, and all the comments are certainly appropriate. It's a pleasure to see the open dialogue, let everybody see this and think about it here, which is certainly appropriate with a contract as big as this. And it's probably appropriate for me to speak, because I won't be around when, when you're dealing with it. But I, I, I will say this, just, um, I mean, my, my own vote, for what it's worth, is, has nothing to do with thoughts of a power play or otherwise. I sincerely believe that what we should be doing at this time is continuing and extending this contract for a reasonable period of time. And during that reasonable period of time, give the new administration plenty of time to become fully acquainted with the deals and what they're doing and, and, and the responsibilities and how well they carry out their job. And that, that, along with mountain of things that the new administration will be faced with, the, the period of one year is, to me, is, is not a good idea, particularly when part of it's going to expire before we even get, get the new administration in place. The, the idea of three years makes sense to me, and, and the way it makes sense to me in my mind is eighteen months to just, just to get to know what's going on, where things are, and become familiar with them. And then, after that period of time, which I, I think is reasonable with construction and all the things that they're doing, then if at that period of time, it began to be clear to the new administration that this is not something that they want to continue, then, then you're going to need a period of time to, to, to start looking at other avenues, to, to plan out a, a change. And it would be a, it, God knows, if we all think about it, you couldn't just change the water and sewer department one afternoon. It, it would have to be a, you know, it would have to be a stepping down of one and all their equipment and all their people and all the relationships and everything that they're doing, then, then reintroduced to someone else, and it, it will be a difficult and long process. And so, I, I do believe that three years is a good one. And I, in, in hindsight, five was too much for my, for my own personal viewpoint. So, I really, I, I think it's, it's good for the people of Bossier City to have the opportunity to have a, learn what's going, have the new administration get acquainted and decide whether what's going on is good, and then have a legitimate period of time to phase in whatever they might want to phase in, or, or perhaps grow a relationship with Man Shack. But anything else just doesn't make any sense to me of, of making a transition without at least some period of time for the run-in and then the change and then, or, or otherwise. So, uh, the, I, I would just, just like to, everyone to know that it has nothing else to do with the new administration, the old administration, a power play or any of that kind of thing, from, from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
I've got one more thing, if you don't mind. Just to the, to the new administration, you know, like Tim just said, you're not going to come in day one and know everything. Just like we shut them down, you're not going to find anybody qualified to do what they do. You know, it's going to take, like you said, it's going to be a learning curve, and I'm not being ugly or, for, for the three of you, to learn everything that's going on in Bossier City. So it's, you just can't turn it on, turn it off like that. It, it just doesn't work like that. You know, not, not to be mean or ugly, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just trying to tell you the God's honest truth. And I know we all have a meeting tomorrow with, with Ben. We've tried to get one for a couple of months now, but we're going to do it tomorrow, and that's going to hopefully open up your eyes about some things.
Mr. Darby?
Mr. President, my recommendation was the one year on the three P. The thirty-first is the expiration date of the three P. If you go from June first to June first, that's a whole year. That's what I was recommending. You know, they can continue with that, you know, for a year, and within that twelve-month cycle, we could do, as I said, RFPs. And once they come in, whichever provider is the Lord's bidder for services, then we would, we would go with that provider. If that's Man Shack, we would go with Man Shack.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to vote on the existing proposed contract with Man Shack. Is there any further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to retain Travis H. Morehart, CPA of Cook and Morehart, to provide services for the finance department, first reading.
So moved.
I guess this is an appropriate time to, first and foremost, to thank, you want to come to the mic, please? Ms. Fernandez, for her dedication through the years and.
I appreciate all of y'all and the opportunities that y'all have given me with the city. I, I've learned a lot, and I'm ready to move on to my next, my next goal.
Well, it's one, it's been a wonderful and, it's a tragic loss losing you, but I know that the parish is gaining a true asset. You've been fantastic, and we can't thank you enough.
Stacy, let me say one thing, too. I've been here a long time, and we've worked, we've worked with a lot of, or several finance directors, okay? Me and David made them red as beet, okay? But, you know, I know we disagreed on a couple of little things, but you've got to be the best one that we've ever had, the easiest one to work for, the, the way you could actually come talk to you and tell us what's going on. And, and I, I really hate losing you. But I know I was with a police jury guy Saturday, and he's really, really to get you out there, so.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, if I could say, Stacy, I would like to thank you. You've been just a delight to work with, everything that, that I've needed. You've always provided the answer and clear, concise reports. Plus, you're just a, a very nice, easy person to work with, and I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Echo here as well.
And I would like to say the same, too, Ms. Fernandez. Your professionalism and your way to, to bring us up to speed has been just tremendous throughout the whole tenure you've been here. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, you know, Stacy and I just participated in a rating agency call on the bonds that are being refunded. And the rating agency made comment about the fact that, you know, this department shares the finances each month in this, in this public meeting for people to see and hear. And it's not a, it's not a common policy with public bodies, and today that was reflected in the sale of bonds. Which, to that point, Mr. Hall, why don't you also mention the fact of the, our marketability of our refunding and the diverse nature of the selling of all those refunding? And what was the one resounding note that all of the underwriters and everyone that was involved in the transaction, what did they say? Rebut regarding the management of our utilities?
That it, that our, our utilities are managed unlike any other, they're transparent.
In the country.
In the country.
In the country.
In the same way, in the same way as the finances. The finances being out there provided a lot wider market than most people have in selling their bonds. And the difference was almost four million dollars in what the predicted return savings was to what it actually was. And I mean, it, it was a great day for Bossier City today in the market.
Good deal.
Anyway, tremendous transaction, tremendous lady, we appreciate everything you've done, and good luck. And if there's anything we can do in the future, please know we're all here for you. And to the ordinance that's being proposed here, Mr. Morehart has helped this administration and council in several issues that we have come up in the past. And we feel as though, since Ms. Fernandez is going to a new position with the parish, that we need someone with governmental accounting experience. He's a prove, proven and tried CPA in the governmental and nonprofit arena. And in light of that, we're going to engage Mr. Morehart to assist, not as a director of finance, but someone that goes and checks and makes sure everything's being done. And if they have questions, Molly and the rest of the staff, that Mr. Morehart can help guide them through. Ms. Fernandez was in total agreement with this process, so, and he'll be able to report to the council as far as the operations and make sure, you know, that there's a smooth transition July first to the new administration with respect to the Department of Finance. But in the meantime, it's someone that the mayor and council can go to, as we did with Ms. Fernandez, so.
So there's a question, whether, what is your last date?
Today.
Okay. And so is, will there be an, who will be the acting?
There will not be a director of finance, Mr. M-
So is that, um, it strikes me that typically in a department, when you vacate a chief, you have an acting chief?
Well, the requirement is that it be a CPA. And right now, Ms. Fernandez, right-hand person, is not a CPA.
Okay. So, and so this, by making this appointment, that fulfills the need for the CPA? And then is, are there other things that come up in this period of time that, how are, how are the duties that she has now, between now and, and when the new administration comes in, how will that be managed?
We'll have the C E O work with Molly on the day-to-day stuff, but as I say, we needed a CPA there. In the interim, we never was intended to appoint Molly permanent because we knew the charter called for CPA, so. And this will also give the new administration time to nominate their person. But in the interim, C, C E O and Molly would take care of the day-to-day business.
So that fills the two, the two months, and then new administration has a free rein to?
To hire whomever to nominate to y'all for approval.
Thank you.
Any further comment, any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two jailers for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one firefighter position due to a resignation, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution opposing House Bill six-thirty relative to the Cypress Black Bayou Recreation and Water Conservation District, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Believe we had, is there any discussion on the council?
Mr. President, I, I read the resolution. I, I do agree, um, I agree with portions of it, I don't agree with the House Bill six-thirty in its entirety, but a portion of it I do agree with. And, and I just, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of having a hard time supporting this resolution, because there, there are parts of it that I do agree with, that House Bill six-thirty.
I sent everybody a email the day, this morning, I was contacted by Representative Horton, who said she has amendments that she's proposing that will address some of the concerns that were reflected in the resolution. I spoke to her at eight o'clock this morning, and due to it being a council day, I sent everybody an email. If you didn't get it, I did speak to her this morning, and I told her I'd let the council know before they voted on this resolution.
I'll add to that, too. I, I spoke with Representative Horton last night, and she walked me through a number of things that, as a result of the input that she has been getting, that she does intend to then make amendments to and revise the bill. And so, and, and there certainly are things that, that in the bill that is- And so, and, and there certainly are things that, that in the bill that is there now unamended that, that, that I spoke with her about, that, that seemed, that, that I felt like I was opposed to. Nonetheless, you know, it occurs to me that since that is in a transition, perhaps we would, we would want to think about how we want to handle this in view of the fact that, that the bill that this was addressing now is being amended. And I, uh... Perhaps we would have a, an approach that we would, you know, let the amendment get in place and then have a revisit this in some way, I, uh...
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Any, any thoughts about that?
Well, let me just explain. I contacted Mr. Hall to draft this resolution in response to the bill, which was going to be heard this Thursday at nine o'clock in its current form. So, I had him draft that to put it on the day, which, you know, has since brought forth, you know, these proposed amendments that are to be drafted. But in the meantime, do we have anybody here in the audience that would like to speak one way or another?
I'm Amanda Nottingham, offices 954 Highway 80 in Houghton. I'm resident, Representative Horton's legislative assistant. These amendments that have been drafted are not in response to this resolution. They were already in the works. We've been working with the other appointing authorities. And so, it's disappointing that a resolution of opposition to this House bill without anyone contacting our office was offered up. We have been working diligently for nearly a year now to ensure that everyone involved in this is going to have equitable representation and that this bill is going to be fair and provide accountability on all sides.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Alex Vazella. Office address 333 Texas Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. My law firm represents Cypress Black Bayou and so that's why I'm here speaking with you today. So, I have just found out today that this resolution is, and this bill is being amended. Unfortunately, the district has not been involved in this process at all. We found out about the bill when it was introduced about a week ago and it was immediately set for hearing, which as Mr. Montgomery had stated, it was supposed to be this Thursday. It's my understanding that it has been moved. I don't know when it's rescheduled. Like I said, we have not been given any information on this. But considering the fact that I am, have no idea what the proposed amendments may be and the fact that this apparently has moved very quickly since it's been introduced, I would like to address a few of, I guess more of the legal concerns that, that I as the district attorney have with the bill. I can, I'm going to kind of just hit the highlights for y'all so I don't take up too much of y'all's time. And if you have any questions or if you want some additional information, I'm, you know, more than happy to provide that to y'all. So, the first thing that I think we have the issue with is there seems to be a desire to remove sovereign immunity. The proposed bill attempts to remove sovereign immunity altogether, blanket waiver of sovereign immunity. Currently, under the constitution, Louisiana constitution, sovereign immunity has been waived in certain circumstances and that's basically in breach of contract or for any kind of injury to person or property. That is a blanket waiver under the constitution for any entity in Louisiana that has sovereign immunity. So, I'm not 100% sure what the push for the removal of sovereign immunity altogether is. Since I have been representing the district, I can only think of one case in which sovereign immunity would even arguably apply. And as it, as that case currently stands, the Second Circuit has found that that case actually falls within the general waiver under the constitution. So, other than that, I can't think of another case where that would be applied to. So, I guess I'm not 100% sure the full reason for wanting to have a blanket waiver of sovereign immunity. The other issue that kind of coincides with that is in the statute, it provides, the statute as it currently stands, as it's enacted, provides for certain immunities, generally speaking. In the proposed bill, it eliminates that immunity. It's very unclear what that applies to. Does that apply to any kind of immunity? Is it limited to sovereign immunity? As I'm sure you all know, there are various kinds of immunity that public entities have. For example, you know, discretionary statutory immunity, which basically provides, you know, public entities with immunities for discretionary acts, discretionary decisions, things like that. So, again, it's just unclear and that's one of the, one of the other concerns that we have with the bill as it currently stands. The next thing is the, the new statute or as proposed, provides for specific, you know, causes of removal. As it stands right now, I think the appointing authorities have the authority under, under statute to remove their appointee. Whether it needs to be with cause or not, arguably, I think under the constitution, it has to be with cause. But regardless, one of the causes for removal under the proposed statute provides for conflict of interest. Again, it's unclear what conflict of interest applies to. As you all know, there is a code of government ethics. The Board of Ethics has sole authority over that. So, it's unclear whether the police jury, as it stands right now, because the police jury has been given all of the authority to, to remove, are they going to be having to make these decisions on conflict of interest, things like that? Just another issue that's unclear right now. Again, vacancies, there's one portion of the statute that provides that any vacancy will be filled by the remaining board members. But then part of the proposed revision is that the police jury would essentially, or the appointing authority, depending on which removal portion you're under, would replace that board member. And then again, the removal provision altogether, specifically the portion that deals with removal by complaint of a taxpayer. There's no limitation to that. You know, you could have a taxpayer, citizen, anyone, put in a complaint every 10 days and you have an endless, you know, endless hearings. And if the board member doesn't request a hearing within 10 days, they're deemed automatically removed. You know, these, the board members for the district, they're part-time and they get $40 a meeting. That's it. Who's going to pay to defend the board members every single time you've got to come up for a hearing on whether or not, you know, you can keep your, your position essentially? So, those are kind of just the, the basics, the highlights. There are some, obviously some other, some other issues with it, but I just wanted to at least bring these to your attention to the extent that there may not be another opportunity to do so before it comes before a committee. So, if there is an amended bill, hopefully at this point, maybe we'll actually get to see it before it's introduced. But if not, I would like for you at least to consider the resolution that you're considering for purposes of the bill how it is now, just considering the fact that we have just kind of been out of the loop on this whole thing. That's really all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just, I have a question. So...
Yes, sir.
These observations that you've made, have you communicated those to Representative Horton?
Not yet. We honestly, I found out that it was introduced, I guess, I think it was maybe last Monday or Tuesday. So, this is all kind of, I mean, there was, there was a bill that was introduced last year, which again, we were made aware of after it was introduced. But we, we've been very limited on time on, on how we were responding to this because at first, we were actually preparing to be in Baton Rouge Thursday for the hearing and that got moved, I think, on Friday, this past Friday. But I'm more than happy to sit down and, and communicate all of this with Representative Horton, her staff. I've been willing to do that this whole time. I've just never been contacted and, and members of the district have not been contacted about.
Well, you've stated it for the record, so it's there.
Makes sense to get everybody together, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Thank y'all for allowing us to speak. Robert Berry, 135 Cypress Park Drive is the business address. The legislative assistant from Representative Horton's office a while ago made a comment that all entities have been involved in this. I think I spoke with several of y'all today as councilman. Y'all, y'all didn't even have a clue of, of what this was. And that's the aggravation of this whole thing. It's been going on for two years. None of us find out until it's in a committee meeting and then we have to go to work on it. And then Representative Horton comes back, either pulls the bill or wants to amend it. And I, I think as Mr. Larkin said a while ago, the, the proper thing to do in this is for all the entities and, and the district, for Representative Horton to sit down with all of us and, and let's see what the complaints, what our gripes are. Let's look at it together as a team and try to come up with a resolution that, that we move forth with. And I think everybody's agreeable with that, but like I say, we've got to be invited to it. You know, if you have a party and you're not invited to it, you're, you're not going. So, I think that's what we're trying to ask for is that we get that. And like I say, hopefully it happens. If not, this thing's going to push forward and then we'll have to go down there and fight it in the committees. But I think it's just unfair that none of us as public entities are being made aware of this before time.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Robert, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to, in light of the fact of Mr. Hall and the legislative assistant for Representative Horton, that they are currently working on these amendments, I'd like to request that I get a motion to reverse the original motion introduced.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to remove this from the agenda item today.
Phyllis, do we have to make a motion to, or he can just...
Now, Mr. Williams is who made the original motion, so he can change the motion.
I'll just rescind my motion then.
And you make the motion to remove it from agenda today?
To remove it from the agenda, yes.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, do you still second that?
Mr. Jackson, comment on the, on, you know, what's happened. Obviously discovered there's a communication gap here that's pretty serious. And so, for whatever it's worth, you know, I'd be happy to be a part of any discussions between all the parties that are, that are affected by this and maybe get something together that makes sense and everyone's informed and a part of the, ultimately what, anything that needs to be done.
All right. Any further comment? Counsel, please cast your vote.
There's a comment here.
I'm sorry. Let's get hold off on the vote. Oh, no.
Um, we have worked with the appointing authorities while we have not gathered all members of the police jury or of the city council or of the others. But we have, we, we had a meeting in our office with Mr. Hall, with representative from police jury. And so, that's where we have been working with multiple groups in order to seek a resolution that all parties are happy with, since they are the appointing authorities.
To, to, without, you know, making something defensive, why, why has, has the commission not been involved in the process?
We have worked solely with the appointing authorities as, you know, they are the ones that put them in those positions. And so, that's who Representative Horton has worked with on behalf of constituents that have also raised issues and concerns.
It, it looks to me like, I mean, again, it, it looks like one thing that makes sense is to, is to bring the commission in on it just because it directly affects...
Well, the basis of the legislation is to clean up the statute that was, that created the, the board and then also to put in place some things that have been brought up by the public. One of the things being that she mentioned with the removal of a member, you know, we have amendments to change that from what it is currently in the proposed bill. And so, that's where, that's where our focus has been. Not in, not to the board members that are appointed, but to the authorities that did the appointing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Berry, 135 Cypress Park again. She brought up the, the police jury and the city of Bossier. There's three other entities that appoint people to this board. One of them's a levy board team, the other one is a school board, and the other's a town of Benton. Why are we not conversating with them? I mean, that, that's my whole complaint is all of us that have appointees sitting on this board need to be involved, have a say-so in it and, and work with them. And I, I think what you're recommending is a great recommendation. Well, we need to get some communications going and try to get everybody involved. Appreciate y'all's time.
I'll say this, after the discussion that I had with the representative, she made it clear that I think she was heading in that direction and, you know, and had a, it was a good faith attempt from what I could tell, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Does everyone know what we're voting for? It's to remove this item from the agenda. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Stacy Fernandez, Finance Director, Monthly Finance Report.
Counsel, I've distributed the monthly financial reports for March 2021. Page one are our revenues by fund and we're at 113% to budget. Page two are our expenses by fund and we're at 89% on expenses. The sales tax report, it shows year-to-date, we're down 4%. However, if we're going to compare apples to apples, last March, we had a $1.7 million audit settlement that covered multiple years. So, if you would back that out, we would actually be up 10% year-to-date. Okay, page four is our manning report. We are at 662 employees compared to 664 last month, still below budget 28. Finally, our utility report for the month of March, we're at 129% to prior year. We're at 128% year-to-date prior year. We're at 166% to budget and the rolling 12 months is 68%. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan Roshenbach, City Engineer, Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Seeing as Clinton Patrick has done most of the heavy lifting on this report, I wanted to introduce him to the council and allow him to present on, on the city engineering department's behalf, so. Without further ado, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Walker. This is our monthly update for the engineering department. We'll try to run through this fairly quickly.
Did you turn it on, Clinton?
I did not turn it on. Still have a currently $133 million worth of work being completed and during construction with 73 of that being in construction, I'm sorry, 133 in design and construction, with eight projects either in the design phase or in, during the bid phase. 16 projects under construction with seven subdivisions entering in the completion phase. Here, we've got the Carriage Way Phase 1. We're about to wrap this project up. The contractor is out there laying some additional striping, some additional batting around the roundabout and a couple odds and ends. And we are working closely with the contractor to get the final quantities on that project, to have them on the next council agenda in order for a report of reconciliation. And then we also have the beautification efforts that are going to be done. They're still in the design phase as well. Swan Lake Road at I-220, we're looking at a May 2021 completion date. As you can tell, they've finished up under the underpass. The westbound I-220 off-ramp was opened yesterday morning and that is the last scheduled closing. The westbound I-220 off-ramp was opened yesterday morning and that is the last scheduled closure on the off-ramps. And they will be installing a final concrete curb island and then be moving to finishing up the asphalt and striping and hopefully we'll get this project completed and, and open it all back up to all the constituents. Melrose Drive, they are chugging along. This picture was taken late last week. They've actually since installed all the rock base. We got testing on that done today. They will be moving forward with laying the concrete and we should have this one knocked out fairly shortly as well. Coleman Street, you can see that they've made a lot of headway here since the last council meeting, since the last council update. They've gotten all the curb and gutter installed and have had all the underground drainage system installed as well along this item. And we do not have a new completion or the percentage completed yet as we have not gotten that update from DOTD, but they said they'd be sending over shortly.
But they have been kicking butt down there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so they, they are blowing going and they're trying to get to that next phase while school's out, that way it's less disturbance on the school traffic. The Highway 71 street, street, streetscape Phase One, they are chugging along. As you can see, we've got new sidewalk as well as pedestrian lighting. They are currently sitting at 41% complete with 84% of the time elapsed, but in talking with the contractor, they believe that they will still meet their completion date. The Bojor City Burn Building out at their training facility, this project is now substantially complete and will have a report of reconciliation showing those final quantities as well on the May 4th agenda. Animal Control, this will be the last time you see this slide. They have substantially completed this project and if you have not taken a tour of that, I highly suggest it. It is a fantastic facility. I know they've, have started to move in and I know Dale Keeler is, has been anticipating this project getting finished and is looking forward to getting it in use.
It's nice. If you hadn't been, I took one about a month ago. It's, it's really nice. I didn't think it was gonna make it, but.
Tinsley Athletic Ball Fields, this is the picture of the new concession building that is located at the five new fields. As you can see, it's still, still dealing with some mud conditions out there, but they are still making progress. We've got a new dugout shown, backstop shown and they're continuing to move forward. We also did give them a change order to add in a new bathroom that will be completely ADA accessible for the ADA field. That way those children that are on that field, they don't have to trek across the complex in order to get to a bathroom.
You mind if I, I don't wanna interrupt every time, but, you know, I was invited to this meeting with the contractor for the council. You know, these two guys, Patrick and Ben, it was a good meeting, put a hurt in them guys, but they, the original completion date was January 1st of this year, correct? Of course, a lot of rain days, there's snow days and stuff, but, you know, I, I just sit there and listen. I thought they was kinda defending theirself, but like I said, after, at the end of the meeting, y'all come up with a completion date, you know, drop dead date, but like you said, I, I think they're gonna have to be working some weekends to, to get it done.
Yes, sir, and we've had our inspectors out there, did, they have started back on the existing fields, grading those existing fields in order to make some progress where we can at least turn over a portion of the complex back over the parks and right back to the city where we can start generating some revenue.
It was a good meeting.
PSE Lighting Projects, this is the Brookshire Grocery Arena. Not a huge update at this point in time. The contractor is waiting on materials to hit the ground for the high mast arm lights that are located in the parking lot. Last time I checked with them, they're still waiting on them to come. Everything's been pushed back due to suppliers. Hopefully we'll get them soon. The Citywide Street Improvement Project, we are trying to incorporate all five districts. We currently have under contract the sidewalk improvements as well as Phase One and Phase Two. We are scheduled to have Phase Three bid opening on May 18th. That project actually, I believe, advertises tomorrow and with a, with one final bid package coming for Phase Four. And here's a picture of some of the work that's being done. This is located inside Tiburon, near Longacre Drive. I believe Jeter Street is nearing completion as lo, as well as the stuff being inside Tiburon. I know they've turned up a lot of dirt inside of that subdivision and they should be finished in that area hopefully by tomorrow. We also have Phase Two being currently in the staging period. The contractor should be mobilizing and getting ready to start tearing up dirt on May 1st. And we also have the sidewalk improvements being done right now. I believe right now they are down in South Bojor and we're trying to keep them in a centralized location as much as we can before they get turned loose to other spots. And we're trying to do as much as we can with that sidewalk contract. Private Development, we've got a couple of pictures here showing what's being done. I believe the top picture is Duckwater Landing Unit Number One. I believe the bottom picture is located inside the Preserve. Couple of the projects that are in bid or still in design, we've got Phase Two of the highway lighting design. It's currently in, currently still in design. Comments have been sent back to the design engineer. They are coordinating with the lighting manufacturer to make sure that they are matching current city standards and what the city currently has installed along the highway. East Bank Fire District, East Bank Fire Station is still under design. We heard the bids opened today on Clifford Almond Park. Once we have those analyzed, finance department analyzes those, we'll look at awarding the contract for that. And South Bojor capital improvements, there's, that is still currently in design, but I believe we're nearing about 75 to 80% complete on those designs. The early stages of the, of a traffic study and design for a left turn lane located at Golden Meadows on Highway 71. Just some other notes here. Traffic engineering, we've still been coordinating with Urban Systems on the preliminary data that they've been received. Have currently scheduled to have them here on May 18th to give an update to the council on what that preliminary design is and the steps to move forward after that design has been taken. Also been coordinating with the police jury as well as DOTD on extending the left turn lanes on Benton Road under the underpass at I-220. And we're also working with the traffic engineering department on the early stages of a track, of a signalization software upgrade as those are in need. And property standards, we're still heavily responding to numerous complaints. Those guys are out there all day, every day doing the best that they can answering all those complaints.
Who's handling the software upgrades for the signalization?
So John Kelly with the traffic engineering department. He's, he's heading that up. He's been coordinating, looking at, I believe it's eight, I may misspeak here, maybe, I think it's ATS M dot now. It's the new software that's regulated and in conjunction with DOTD and DOTD signals. And so that's what we're looking at upgrading. I believe there's also federal mandates pushing down a flashing yellow turn signal that would be incorporated with that upgrade.
Is that being done in conjunction with Urban Systems?
No, sir.
Are they, that's total?
That's, that's separate, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Jeter Street. Are we gonna be able to remove that steel plate or the problems underneath there that we're gonna have to do that in place?
Yes, sir. Part of that, part of their project was to investigate to find out what that was. We did find out that that was some old drainage structures and they're going to encase that, I believe, in concrete and make, and get rid of that steel plate that's located there. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, Urban Systems will be here on May the 18th. We had our dates wrong. Justin Haydell with Man Shack update on the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way.
Good afternoon again, counsel. You've got my update that I normally prepare for y'all. All of the permits are in hand. In other words, we have the copies of the signed permits except for the signal synchronization permits from DOTD. We had a conversation with the local DOTD office this week and the permits are approved. Baton Rouge approves those, so they're on their way to Bojor City, you know, however they get here. Union Pacific Railroad will be sending over an agreement for the city to sign regarding payment to UP for them providing a flagman. They actually said they would send that a while back and they haven't done it yet. The utility relocations, I won't read them verbatim, but everything is going pretty good. Nothing we see really interferes with the construction. The 20-inch water line relocation, the bid opening was today, so we'll be hopefully looking at those bids, making sure that they're in compliance with everything and getting with the contractor and getting them started. The Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Stormwater Pump Station, y'all approved the funding for it today. I've already got bid dates from purchasing, so we'll start advertising on May the 5th and open the bids on June the 1st. The Citizens Bank Drive Stormwater Pump Station is under design. The roadway and the bridge, as you know, is advertising for bids. We had the pre-bid meeting on April the 15th, was very well attended. You can see we had 10 contractors attend the meeting, doesn't mean they're all gonna bid as the prime. I think some of them are looking for subcontracting opportunities, but you got all the big boys from Louisiana and several contractors from out of state, so I think we have some healthy competition. We've issued a couple of addenda, we've got another one going out this week and the bids for the project will be opened right here on May the 4th. So anybody has any questions they'd like to ask?
When did Man Shack take over the basic management?
June of last year.
June of last year. And if I remember correctly, that we were told here in this, these council chambers that we didn't know if we were ever gonna build this project and we didn't know if we would ever be able to work anything out with the railroad as well as other governmental entities. And here we stand today, it's April 20th, roughly 10 months and we're gonna bid this job inside of a year or so. I would like to commend Mr. Haydell and Man Shack for moving this project along when others said, threw their hands up and said, I don't think there's anything that we can do to get this done. So thank you for all y'all's efforts.
Thank you.
Is there any other, the business come before the council today? Everyone have a great week, meeting adjourned.